Okay.
I would like to call to order the Planning Commission, Larkspur Planning Commission meeting of May 25th. And as everybody knows, this is a remote meeting and anybody wanting to join that's having trouble should email the site that's on the agenda. There's also a telephone number you can call on the agenda if you want to call in. Can we have the rule call, please?
Vice Chair Kuntzler.
Present.
Commissioner Swisher.
Present.
Commissioner Chalmers.
Present.
Commissioner Tauber.
Present.
Chair Wagstaff.
Present. Is there anybody in the audience? I see eight panelists that would like to speak on something that's not on the agenda?
We have one hand up.
Okay.
I need to ask the person with area phone number 415-924-1402 to unmute yourself. No, you just, there we go.
James Holmes, Larkspur. Speaking of agendas posted, when I was down to City Hall today, I did not see the agenda for this meeting posted on the, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. The notices of public hearings were all duly posted, but not the agenda that I could find. So while it's remotely possible, I could have missed it. I did look closely for it. So please, please take note of that.
Thank you, James. That was likely my mistake.
Thank you, James. Could we have the planning directors report if there's nobody else?
Okay, thank you Chair Wagstaff and members of the Planning Commission. A few items to report. Number one, we have issued a recruitment that's gone out for the associate planner position. We've, we've actually with some of the economic recovery that's been occurring, some of the revenues, the city manager authorized moving forward with a, instead of recruiting for an assistant planner to replace our prior assistant planner, we're recruiting for associate position. And that just went out last week. We already have two responses. So we're looking forward to hopefully getting many qualified applicants for this more advanced training position. We look to evaluate what's submitted by mid-June and begin setting up interviews for that process. Additionally, the budget includes a permit technician position since the advent of the COVID-19 emergency. Or shortly after that, we did have a retirement and we've been operating with one permit tech doing Jim Carrigan, doing a lot of juggling of those duties, managing permits through remote channels with City Hall closed. So it's, and in fact, we've barely, while we did certainly had a lull in the permits over early on last spring, we really had stayed pretty busy. The permit level stayed up throughout the summer, through the fall. And we're, we're still on pace this fiscal year to match our, our prior year's permit level. So it's been pretty busy and we are budgeted for an additional permit technician position. That's the budgets adopted will begin that process as well. Those are positions that can help support our operations in City Hall, which have really been over this period focused on just keeping the bare minimum operations going, access to responding to the public, keeping planning applications moving, keeping building permits moving and being able to kind of keep heads above water. Unfortunately, not engaging in as much and as effective policy work and other work we'd like to really be focusing on. So we're hoping we'll be freeing up some of that work as we get more people on board. And also more ability to open up the City Hall to the public. Right now, we're working on a very short staff. So even opening the doors will present a challenge as the COVID restrictions are lifted. Another item to report is I'm sure you've read in the paper. Number one, we're certainly in a drought condition. And number two, the Marin Water District, we've been in conversations, the various cities have been in discussions with the Marin Water District. They are now taking steps to institute a moratorium, which will likely come July 1st. And that would be a moratorium on new water hookups. That would affect new dwelling units, potentially new commercial businesses, changes of use potentially, and also ADUs. ADUs are considered new hookups. We've been having discussions with the water district about their options and whether they would be considered looking favorably upon ADUs and affordable housing projects, potentially exempting those from the moratorium. So that's a discussion we're having with them as we start approaching that moratorium issue. And as you know, unless we have a pretty significant rainfall the next season, it's likely this moratorium would continue for some period of time beyond that. And then just one item of business of note, Kristin Teicher, Senior Planner, she will be taking a much needed week off vacation next week. So she'll be out of office after Memorial Day for that week, actually starting Friday. And I will be having to cover a lot of the queries and questions and things that come in that Kristin often covers very well. So that's going to stretch my time a little bit. If you have questions, if you need anything, do feel free to call me. But just recognize, I might be a little slow to answer. I'm going to be juggling a lot while Kristin's gone. And that's it for the report. I think we can maybe talk later during the commissioner reports regarding the issue of the meetings and potential opening of meetings. I don't really have anything to report on that now because we will be following the lead of the city clerk, the direction of the city clerk and city council on the mechanisms for opening up or having in-person public hearing processes. So without any questions?
Neil, I had a quick question. ADUs do not require a second water meter. They're working off of the main, the water meter for the house.
That's correct. They can't, yeah, they can have, they don't require a second meter. They're considered. But the district has indicated to us, they consider it to be a new service or hookup. And that's a discussion we're having because it's, there are, there are certain projects you can do pretty substantial remodels and renovations or additions without necessarily increasing your service. And so it doesn't restrict doing that. And so it's been our position that when it comes to significant water usage, ADUs would be a very limited amount of demand. And very important to keep ADUs coming in. We're, we're just starting to really see some pickup in that, in that area.
Does anybody else have any questions for Neil? Okay, thanks Neil. We have, the first agenda item is 30 Diane Lane, which actually happens to be within 500 feet of where I live. So I'm going to ask that Daniel takes over that now, if you could.
Okay, thank you. Thank you Chair Wagstaff. So we, what we are considering is design application number 2103 relative to 30 Diane Lane. And the application in question was for design review for area ratio exception and three variances. Just today, we received as late mail, a request on the part of the applicant for a continuance of this item. So the applicant can address some of the, some of the areas that were raised in the, in the staff report, particularly with regard to bulk replacement of the property, its effect on, is effect on floor area ratio and setbacks. So the, the commission is going to be requested, it's going to be requested of the commission provide this continuance. However, since this is a public meeting and since this item is in fact on the agenda, we cannot simply delete it or omit it. So at this point in time, before the commission actually takes a vote, we're going to ask if there's any public comment on this as a public meeting, if there is any public comment on this application before we decide whether to zip the graphic continuance or whether we do need a full presentation on this application. So if I could ask your Kristin to determine whether in the audience is anyone who wishes to comment on this application?
If anyone wishes to comment, you should raise your hand now. I do not see any raised hands.
Okay, so with that, I will in fact close the public meeting and bring it back to the commission. And ask the commission whether they would concur with the request to simply graph, graphic continuance without further presentation of this application, or if they would prefer to see another process. So could I, could I ask my colleagues in order, maybe I'll start with you Laura, whether you have any objection to granting the continuance or whether you see that as the right path?
I do not have an objection and appreciate the applicant's desire to address the issues that were raised by staff before bringing it up.
Okay, thanks Natasha.
Yes, I completely agree with Laura. I think we should definitely give them the time to address the issues and I'm glad to see they're doing that.
Yeah, and Jeff?
I totally agree with that opinion as well.
Okay, as do I. So with that, could I get a motion to continue item 2103?
To a date uncertain.
To a date uncertain, thank you.
I will so move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So I, any opposed? I hear none and we have one abstention because of accusal. And I think that will do it for this item.
Thank, thank you Daniel. I'm back online.
Thank goodness.
The next item on the agenda is design review 2106, which is 146 Madrone Avenue. And maybe Lorraine could give us the staff report.
Good evening Chair Wagstaff and members of the commission. The applicant is requesting permits to construct a 685 square foot first and second story addition to an existing home. I'm sorry, there's something going on in the computer.
Trying to get her video. Oh, there it goes. Okay.
Okay, should I start over?
You can keep going.
Okay, sorry. To an existing home on a 4,479 square foot parcel, it includes design review, floor area ratio exception and a variance. 146 Madrone is a non-conforming rectilinear lot and has an average slope of 15%. It's located in the Baltimore Canyon neighborhood. Within the public right of way in front of the residence is a retaining wall, a fence, a partial trash enclosure, steps and storage shed. The site and several lots on the block face are not provided with the driveway or vehicular parking due to the steep cut bank, the distance from the roadway, existing vegetation and a small sized lot. The applicant is proposing both the first and second story addition, mostly at the rear and east side of the existing house. The original structure contain, continues to contain, rather maintain, the two foot setback on the west side property line and 18 feet, four inches to the east side property line where five feet is required by code. The proposed new additions would need the minimum five foot side yard setbacks. I'm just going to briefly go over the major modifications. At the lower level, the addition would extend to the rear of the home. On the upper level, the addition would extend the floor to the rear and step back 16 and a half feet from the east side property line. The upper floor would be recessed eight feet from the first floor below on the east side. A foot and a half from the first level below at the rear of the structure and propose 20 and a half feet back of the front property line. A new bedroom number two and master bath would be created with the upper floor addition. The first floor and second story additions would match the exterior house. There are minor site improvements. I'm not going to go through all of them. But what I'd like to discuss first off is the design review. So staff finds the design presents a modest addition to the residence that would be in scale with the existing home and allow the home to remain compatible with other residences in the neighborhood. The proposed addition is designed in a manner which is minimally visible from the street frontage and adjacent properties and would be set back 24 feet, five inches from the home at 36 Madrone Avenue to the east. So I did go and visited with the neighbor at 136 Madrone Avenue and I viewed the story poles from the garden and from the upper floor. And from the garden, if you look up from the garden, you could see it, but it's not really like in your face. It's just, you see it from a distance. They happen to have a lot of vegetation and trees along the property line and the neighbor indicated they might even add more trees. When I went into the house, they showed me from the upper floor bathroom window what it would look like. You do see it, it's more prominent from the bathroom window, but they had indicated that they usually have the blinds down and it's not that much of a deal to them. So it's good that there is landscaping and vegetation along the side yard. At 150 Madrone, the addition is even less visible as again, it's screened also by trees and landscaping in the side yard. So staff finds that due to the relationship of the residence to surrounding properties, the placement of the addition on the east side and rear of the house and location on the lot back from the street, that the proposed improvements are not anticipated to present significant impacts to privacy or access to light air or views from the adjacent properties. The height and placement of the new addition is compatible with prevailing neighborhood scale and pattern of development. The addition is minimally visible from the immediate adjacent properties and at street level. In terms of the floor area exception, an FAR survey was prepared for the project and the FARs in the area range from point 11 to point 73 with an average of point 30. The applicant is requesting a point 45 FAR. The neighborhood has residences ranging from 1,049 square feet to just under 5,000 square feet with an average floor area of just under 2,800 square feet. The proposed FAR would fall within the range of the FARs and would conform to the neighborhood. The proposed addition in existing residents would be below the average floor area and within the range of lots of similar size. The orientation and design of the addition on the site minimizes the perception of bulk as seen from adjacent residences by the use of step back second story, which pulls the massing away from the adjacent properties and adds articulation and visual interest. The first story addition is modest, does not add to the bulk or massing. The added floor area is not anticipated to have significant negative impacts on the adjacent neighbors. The project will serve to maintain and enhance the use of the property as a single family residence within a designated single family residential district. Although the site is currently non-conforming to the required parking standard that is consistent with the development pattern along the homes on this block face. Further, there is on-street parking available across the street and down the block from the site, which can be used for residents and guests. In terms of the variance to parking, the site is small. A narrow lot that is elevated above the street and separated from the roadway. Providing four code required parking spaces would not be possible due to the narrow width and placement of the home on the lot within the front yard setback. Construction of a single car garage would occupy a significant part of the street from frontage, limited yard area and would likely not meet the setbacks. Adding parking in the existing site conditions would require substantial excavation, which would incur considerable expense and require the removal of two or three mature trees. Therefore, a strict application of the parking requirements would deprive the property owner of the privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity and this are one zoning district. Namely, the ability to maintain and improve the existing building conditions on the site. Other properties in the area have received approval for a parking waiver for new additions, including 143 Madrone Avenue. So lastly, the approval of the variance would not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with other properties in the vicinity. Staff has received two public comments from the neighbors at 148 and 150 Madrone. Both letters were in support of the project. So staff recommends the project is consistent with the required findings for approval of design review, floor area ratio exception and the variance. And I'd be happy to answer any questions of the commission.
Does anybody have any questions for Lorraine? Thank you, Lorraine. That was very complete. Would the applicant or the architect like to speak now? I see one hand. Is, is Kristin there to click on that or can I do that?
Sorry, I just tried to unmute Nora and she disappeared. So Mr. Tollis, you can speak.
Hi, thank you very much. This is John Tollis. I'm here with my wife Tara and my son Owen. We've lived here in the Madrone Canyon for the past seven years and we anticipate living here well into the future. We really enjoy the quiet tree cover and walkability of this neighborhood. Through COVID, with two adults at home and a growing family with aging parents who occasionally visit from other parts of the country, we realized the need for a bit more living space. We've worked with our architect to add a bedroom and some additional living area to the property while minimally impacting the existing building footprint. We appreciate your consideration and look forward to the commission's comments, review and approval of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak?
Nora, you can speak now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that this is a modest addition to a small home. In addition to the two written letters of support from both adjacent neighbors to the west, they've received verbal support from the adjacent rear neighbor and the front neighbor. The design has a minimal impact to the neighbors because it was located in the existing courtyard area and the second story is step back and there's no upper deck. I think the new design is an improvement both visually and materially and will complement the neighborhood.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
James, you can speak again if you'd like.
Is James there?
I think so, but I have a funny little red mark next to his name. James, we need to ask you to unmute. There it goes.
Hi, I think we're having, or at least I'm having problems with the connection tonight because I could hardly hear anything. In any, pardon me. I, I, it cut in and out as also did apparently the reception from New York. So I don't know if you can hear me, but if you can't, then please interrupt me. I, I, I assume grant the parking variance because there's literally no way to provide for more parking here. But when I reason back from granting the parking variance, I have to ask, does it make sense to allow whatsoever? As I recall, one of the principles of variance is that it shouldn't exacerbate a non-conformity and essentially if you allow a much larger house with no parking, you exacerbate the parking non-conformity because a bigger house has a potential of more people and, and, and more people can conceivably necessitate more parking. And I think this issue with the parking ties in with the FAR exception because exception findings, is it number two, is that it won't result, it won't contribute significantly to an increase in the parking congestion. I question whether that finding really can be made, given that it's a significantly larger house and that means more people and more cars. Two additional facts relating to parking I'd ask you to consider. There's parking allowed only on one side of this street. And number two, right next door to the
James, you're cutting out. You need to repeat yourself.
Were to allow a larger home with no parking here, then I think you'd be hard pressed to deny that same privilege to the other two similarly situated houses right next door and then parking would, would be a real mess. Turning to the FAR exception to hear the, the staff report, but the numbers seem, seem pretty stiff to me because if I read from point 30 to point 45 and to over 2,000 square feet, arguably, if I did the math right and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but apparently the house is, is already way over the FAR at 1,947 square feet versus the allowable. My, my, hello?
James, James, are you moving a certain direction at certain points? Cause you're coming in well, then you fade out entirely.
No, I, I've actually been holding the telephone right next to my mouth, but it sounds like that you're having the same problem hearing me that I had hearing the, the staff report and what, what you were able to hear. Did you, did you hear the, the point about the, the FAR numbers?
Yes, we did. Thanks, James.
Yeah, the, the house is already a zero lot line house and, and now it will be visually stretched across the whole frontage. Just, just two other points in, in conclusion. Asked by the trees, but
Can you repeat that please, your conclusion? Cause we, we lost you again.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said, two, two points in conclusion. First, the trees greatly mask the bulk, but they're multi-trunk bay trees and they have no, growing on the hillside and they have no protection whatsoever. They could be gone in a heartbeat and this has happened up the street. And if that happened, then the house would really loom over the feet. And the second point is that exception, exception request requires a finding that mass reducing techniques be, be used. I, I didn't really see any, but I'd want to point out one thing and that is the current house has lined the eaves with very vivid foot long or foot wide flashing, metal flashing, which really exacerbates the current size. And if the, the very bright reflective flashing is used on the other eaves, then it will not be mass-reducing, it will be mass-exacerbating. The other thing to consider is that a mass-reduction feature now in the house is that it's dark, but of course, the color could be changed. So imagine if the trees were gone and the house was white. It would really, really be massive and bulky. So I ask you to take these points into consideration and ask whether it would
James, can you repeat the last part? We lost you again.
The, I'm sorry. The second point is that with regard to mass-reduction techniques, the house, the current house uses very bright flashing all along the eaves, and it enhances the mass and bulk. And if they use that same type of flashing on the new addition, that will really exacerbate bulk. I also point out that the reason why the masses is, or the bulk is less now is because the house is dark. But if it were, the color were changed, then that would not, that would no longer offset the bulk. Trees were gone and the house were white, it would really loom up above. So I take account of these factors and consider whether it would really be good planning to allow a house of this size on this lot with no parking. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Is there anyone? I see three hands up now. Kristen, can you tell who's who?
Yes, going to say, Nora, why don't you unmute yourself and you can talk?
Hi, I just, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that I think James said the house was 1,947 square feet existing, and it's not. It's only 1,347 square feet. So it does comply right now at 30% FAR. And the reason it has a reduced FAR is because of the slope. The second thing is, the flashing has not been painted yet. It was replaced this spring. The owner told me, and it was previously painted a dark brown, and it will be painted again. So that's not going to be an issue. Another thing is that the house is natural cedar shingles. It's not likely to ever be painted white. The reason the owners bought the house is because of the wooded environment and the way it blends in. Also, there's quite a few large trees all over the property. It's not just in the front. There's a very large maple on the property line between 148 and 50, and quite a few trees in the back as well. So I don't think it, I don't think it would be looming. 70% of the addition is on the first floor, so that is, that's not very massive at all. And I think I'm open for questions if you have any other comments.
I don't have any questions, but does anybody else have any?
Your beauty, Brock.
I see one other hand up. Is that Okay.
Yeah, the property owner had their hand raised but has lowered it.
Okay.
Tollis.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this item? Not seeing any, I will bring it back to the commission for discussion. I would ask that Chairman Chalmers begin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, sorry. Having trouble unmuting myself. Thank you so much for the presentation and the comments from each of the various parties. And I did try and follow, I believe the gentleman's name was James. And I'm assuming he's a resident in the neighborhood. But I did follow his comments, and I appreciate that he made them. But I think where I land here is that I can make the findings here for the design review and the FAR exception. I think the additions, you know, they're at the back. They have minimal impact, in my opinion. They actually are a suitable design for this particular property, as well as the neighborhood in general. So I am in favor of those. And then regarding the variance for the parking, you know, it's just, I don't see how you can put four parking spaces in there, let alone just one space in there. And they're only really adding one extra bedroom to address the comments that were made about additional people coming and going. So, and there does seem to be plenty of parking. I've always had, it's always been easy for me to find parking on that street. So I think we can, I can make also the findings for the variance to waive the parking requirement.
Thank you. How about Commissioner Swisher?
I used to live in the Madrone Canyon toward the very back, and I'm very aware of the issue with parking in this area. Although, to deny these people the ability to remodel their house for an expanding family and for the enjoyment of it is counter to what I believe is right for people. So I think this is a very nice design. It's well-done. It's well-executed. And I think the painting of the flashing to dark, et cetera, it blends in. I took a hike out there a day before yesterday, and I think that the impression of bulk is minimized by the design. I like the setback. I just like the overall look of it. I don't think there's much we can do about parking in the Madrone Canyon. And I don't think it's, I sort of understand where James is coming from because we had similar issues. But, you know, to me, it strikes me as a NIMBY argument that, you know, other people have been allowed to do this. So I don't understand why we can't allow this as well. So I would make a finding for the design as it is presented.
Thank you, Jeff. Commissioner Talber?
Thank you. I think I can, I think I can make all the findings. I think the, in terms of design review, I did walk down there and look, and there was minimal impact. And I think it was a very thoughtfully designed project to expand usable living space, be sensitive to the lovely location in the canyon and sensitivity to neighbors. So I think that that works for me. And I do also believe that the floor area ratio issue, if it was a flat lot, we wouldn't even be talking about it. It really has to do with the slope. And it isn't out of line with some other properties that are in the area. And in terms of the parking, you know, I think it is a tough area to park, but I don't want to penalize these homeowners for that. And I don't think that they can do a whole lot about it in terms of adding parking to their location. So, as I said, I think I can make all the findings.
And Commissioner Kessler?
Yeah, I would concur with everything that's been said, and all the comments do complement each other. I was, there's one salient point that I would add is that Lorraine was very, very attentive to the issue of the grant of special privilege and found none. And that's kind of how I would approach the parking, the parking issue. Is that here we have, we have a design for an expansion which is quite modest. The impact on the parking is in fact speculative. And to deny, to deny that particular variance would in fact penalize the neighborhood beyond anything that a like situation would incur. So with all that, I can make the findings.
Thank you. And bringing it back to me, I actually think that they've done a very nice job. It really becomes a family home, and much of the expansion is on the first floor, which gives them an actual living space, nice kitchen, all the amenities that will make living there a lot nicer. So I also can make the findings. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Don't all talk at once. I will move to, I will move to approve design review, floor area ratio, and parking variance number 2106 for 146 Madrone Avenue.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Hearing no opposition, the item passes. There is a 10-day appeal period. Anybody wants to do that? Thank you. So we'll bring it back to, we have one other item here, which is the appointment of two planning commissioners to the Housing Steering Committee. And I guess, Neil, do you want to talk about that?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Wagstaff and members of the committee. The item I have on tonight as a business item is a response to the significant amount of housing legislation that's been put forward that is imposing a number of mandates on the city to act to modify goals and policies and codes in order to reduce obstacles to housing. We've seen some of this through our updates to ADU ordinances. Additionally, the state has also awarded funding. We are now in pipeline for three different funding sources, some of which we've been using already, some of which we'll be using in conjunction with Marin County and other communities to help begin putting together a draft housing element, which will be due for adoption, at least a draft prepared by the end of next year and for adoption early in 2023. So there are a number of tasks facing the city over the next year or two to address the housing crisis and some of the mandates from the state. And in the recent past, we did form a general plan steering committee for the purpose of providing a committee that staff could work with. In the case of the general plan update, it was really to finalize and refine the draft general plan in response to a number of mandates and updates that occurred over the years to get that draft prepared for hearing. And we felt this was a good format of having two city council members and two planning commissioners sit on that to provide advisory review and feedback to staff as we work to formulate policies based on both the mandates as well as the best practices for, you know, being developed for addressing these types of issues. So we're, we did present this to the city council last Wednesday. And one other thing I do want to add about the steering committee format is what we used with the general plan update was primarily a study session format, which is really kind of a hearing, like a public hearing we have today, except it's not a formal public hearing. It's available to the public, and it's a formatted meeting with an agenda where a staff will come to you to present certain topics or items, whether it's chapters out of the housing element or other topics. Will come to you with a very focused agenda once or twice a month, probably at the most twice a month, and occasionally have potentially a public workshop where we're really looking for public feedback on certain topics that can also involve the steering committee as a body to kind of also be involved in that process. And we do have a few different topics. There is the housing element process, which is upcoming. We have also been engaged in the objective design and development standards with the county of Marin and a number of other agencies throughout Marin, using funding to develop a workbook and a tool, more or less a toolbox, to begin refining for our community. And objective design standards are essentially identifying sort of off-the-shelf, out-of-the-box design requirements for housing projects because the state law will require eventually, either on certain sites, will eventually be requiring buy-right housing and that you apply it through a objective design standard. So the cities can no longer apply design review through subjective design review findings. So that's, it's a challenging process, but the idea is to begin creating framework for developers so they have to sort of, shall we say, paint by numbers, create designs that meet certain standards and have certain, within certain typologies, size and scale. And that's another discussion, but that's just one example of one project we would be working on along with the housing elements, housing element. A lot of the requirements, a lot of the need for the committee is to help staff vet some of the, what would be the housing opportunity sites, those sites that are most likely to help be developed in the future to meet our arena needs through 2020, excuse me, 2031, through our next arena cycle. A lot of those sites will be either around in the areas near the ferry landing and the train station or along Magnolia Avenue or along Sir Francis Drake. We're looking at the opportunity to add housing within many of these commercial areas, either commercial or office. Another project we're working on, in fact, I was reviewing today, is our inclusionary housing study. Inclusionary housing is a requirement where a certain portion of housing within a residential development has to be affordable. And in doing that, that can also be, while you're creating affordable housing, it can also be an obstacle to housing development. So there's a fine balance to applying affordable housing policies, applying affordable housing in lieu fees, and those are fees that might be paid to a fund if somebody decides to pay an in-lug fee rather than build the affordable housing development or units. And we're also looking at NEXUS or impact fees for residential development or and/or commercial development as well. So these are, something's being studied, and we ultimately would come back and potentially update or amend our current inclusionary housing ordinance. This is kind of technical, but it would help to have feedback from a committee before sending it to, preparing it for final presentation as a public hearing item. We also would look at any as-needed items that are related to housing projects. I think tonight you see there's a late mail regarding housing, the housing rent controls for the mobile home parks. And that's a topic that the city council has, in fact, has applied a subcommittee to and has been involved with for over a year now. And that's not something that's directly tied to this group, but it could be something that is, ends up in the, in this venue. Other housing-related projects, again, as they come up, as the state mandates come up, or if the state reviews our ADU ordinance and decides we need to make further adjustments, or if we decide to make further adjustments to our ADU ordinance to better encourage ADU development or JAD development. So it would definitely be focused on some certain be focused on some certain projects we have either in or in the pipeline or on the horizon at this time, as well as any, um, potential issues that might come up that would be helpful to have a committee, uh, to, uh, steering committee to provide feedback for us, uh, before we finalize something for public hearing. Um, so with that, um, I know I've gotten some feedback from some of you who are interested, but I'll let the committee, I'll let the commission discuss the matter. And of course, if you have any questions, feel free.
So Neil, just a quick question. Um, with the water moratorium or, or what's happening with MMWD, how does that play into this whole thing?
Well, like a lot of things, like the, um, like COVID and all the changes to work habits, um, remote working, like, and all the changes to transportation that occurred over that year last year, uh, it, it did not change HCD schedule when, one iota. Um, and we don't anticipate the moratorium is necessarily going to change their schedule, uh, or the requirement for us to fulfill our housing quota. So that's going to be an interesting discussion. I think there, um, will be more discussion with the state if and when the moratorium becomes, uh, more prolonged and potentially it's more, if more, uh, um, development moratoriums occur throughout the state. Um, so we'll, we'll kind of have to keep you posted on that. This is a new development. Um, and it certainly is presenting a concern, uh, for us communities that are facing some very, and again, all communities throughout the Bay area are facing very significant Rina housing, uh, requirements. Um, so, but I think from a policy standpoint, um, it's not really going to change the timeline, at least for the time being.
Um, so, uh, who are the two commit- uh, two, um, city council people?
Uh, it was, uh, Mayor Haroff and, uh, Gabe Paulson.
Okay.
Primary and Catherine Way and, um, Scott Candell, uh, did volunteer to be, um, their backup. I'm trying to remember the term.
Daniel, did you, uh, yeah, I see you appear. Did you, did you want to say something?
No, no, I just said the, I think the word that Neil was looking for was alternate.
Alternate.
Me?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, the word, hell.
Alternate.
Alternate, thank you. I don't think we need two alternates. One alternate that might be nice, um, in case because often the purpose of the steering committee too is to, uh, be able to attend the ma- meeting from the perspective of the planning commission and, uh, be able to report back, uh, to the other commissioners as well. But it's not critical.
So I, I'll, I'll start off. Um, I'm, I'm interested in, in this and I would be happy to be involved, um, unless somebody else really frantically wants to, to do it. Um, I think it's an important thing for us to do at this particular time. It probably should have been done a while ago, but, um, I think there's a lot of things within the code and the, the city, um, ordinances that probably need to be looked at. And, um, so I'm just throwing that out there. If, uh, I'm not sure who else is interested in, uh, I'm, I'm happy to hear from anybody and everybody.
Well, uh, uh, Brock, I, I think it's kind of essential that you be there, uh, because we already, we, we are going to be talking about, this, this committee is going to be talking about, uh, design standards and, um, you know, with your, with your experience as a, you know, as an architect and, uh, having not only participated in this commission, but also presented this commission so many times over the years, uh, I think that your input would be invaluable. So I, I do, I do want to throw that out there. Um, I did tell Neil that I would also be willing to serve. Uh, however, as you probably all know, I have served on these, um, on these committees before for the general plan. Um, and so if somebody else would like a turn, I'd, I'd be happy to, uh, to cease and desist. Uh, but that's, um, uh, I'll just throw that out there. But, uh, if called upon, I will serve. But if not, I won't.
Anybody else out there? There we go.
I will just say that, um, it might be interesting, but I do not have the time.
I can totally understand that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll say the same thing. I, I, that's not a lot of time. Uh, it sounds like a really interesting thing and it's important.
Yeah. And I guess I'm the last one here. Um, I was actually, I am very interested and cause I think it sounds like it would be an interesting position. It'd be fascinating. It's really valuable and really important. Um, but I, I don't think I have the time to, to really fully commit to this. And I think I'd like to wait for me to complete the first year on the commission, um, get a little more experience under my belt and, um, and then maybe looking to join a committee later on. But, um, you know, if you need a lawyer and you need someone as an alternate, maybe that's a, maybe that's where I can step in.
If you have your answer, Neil.
Daniel, it looks like you're out there hanging around with me.
Uh, yeah, gosh. Uh, I'm sorry about that, Brock. Um,
likewise.
Yeah.
I mean.
And, and, and Natasha, it, it also, it also seems like you've just, um, you've just volunteered as an alternate.
Accidentally.
Well, if anybody, if anybody wants to just make, uh, a, a, a full sweep motion, that would be good for the record.
I think, uh, Jeff, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make it. Wait, so am I, am I, am I making a motion that, uh, Daniel and Brock serve on this committee?
And somebody, and somebody as an alternate.
And Natasha as an alternate.
Whoa.
Can I second that or no? Can I second that or not? Because I'm.
Yes, you can.
You absolutely can.
Okay. And I'll second it. Cause Jeff normally seconds and he's already presented.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay.
Okay, so.
Thank you. We've got a committee, um, and I'll be returning to you guys now that we've got everyone in line. This is not going to be structured quite the same as the general plan committee because that was a, a pretty, um, singular track. There's gonna, there's a few different projects on track. I'm going to have to kind of get, give you guys a summary of where we're at with, with all of them and get you some homework. Um, try to make sure we're focused.
Good.
Can I make one comment actually before we move on? Um, I saw Kevin Carroll is on the, yeah, on the call. And I just wanted to make sure that we do acknowledge the letter that we received.
He's actually asking to talk. He has his hand raised with.
Oh, okay. He's probably going to address it. So let's, let him do that.
Why don't, uh, why don't you call on him, uh, Kristen?
I have unmuted you, Mr. Carroll. You're, should be able to speak.
Thank you. Uh, good evening commissioners. I'm not going to keep you very long. My letter is pretty much self-explanatory. I am a member of the Marin Mobile Home, uh, tenant committee. Uh, one of the things in dealing with the city council for the, uh, over the last year is there's a lot of misconceptions or misperceptions about our community on this side of the freeway. So if any of the commissioners, uh, would like more information, Allison, the city clerk has all my contact information. I'm happy to answer any questions or give you a tour of our community. Uh, and the two that, uh, commissioners that were appointed tonight, uh, you will be hearing from me and, uh, I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Yeah, we look here, uh, we look forward to hearing from you too.
Hey, thank you, Kevin. Okay. Any, anybody else? And I don't see anybody, any other, there's still one attendee, but no hands. So, um, so I guess what we need to do is next is approval of the minutes. Would somebody like to move that approval?
Make a motion. We approved the minutes last meeting.
I can second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Um, do any of the planning commissioners have a report? Seeing no, nobody, uh, making a report, um, would somebody like to move to adjourn?
I sure would. I'll, I'll move to adjourn.
What time is it for Daniel?
It's a, it's a little bit after 11 o'clock.
Wow.
Yeah.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? So, um, okay.
Hey, Natasha, um, so.